And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening, and thank you for attending the Lake City Council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raised hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point of meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and give me your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance is to the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, a nation of liberty and justice for all.
Kendy, do please call the wall.
Mayor Scally.
Here.
Councillor Delaba.
Here.
Councillor Fisher.
Here.
Councillor Kennedy.
Here.
Councillor Powers.
Here.
Councillor Reish.
Here.
Councillor Scamperley.
Here.
Quorum present.
We have one proclamation tonight for National Constitution Week, September 17th through September 23rd. I would like to invite Sally Hartman, the Daughters of the American Revolution, Representative patients to join council while the proclamation is read. Constitution Week Proclamation. Whereat is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Whereas, public law, 915, guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as constitutional. Now therefore I, Jeffrey M. Stelling, by the virtual virtue and authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Augustsburg, hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd constitutional. To urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which yet privileged vows to reaffirm the ideas of the framers of the Constitution at 1787 by protecting the freedom guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties remembering that laws, rights, never be gained. Witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand to cause the seal of the city to be affixed this day, September this year of our Lord's 2020. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
We have one presentation this evening.
Mayor Council just want to open up, and we'll turn it over to Shane and Andrea and Angela. So tonight, following the format that we spoke about, this will be the draft preliminary budget for the sewer fund. Again, similar format and fashion that we brief the water, you know, sort of the high level, the high points, the status of where each of the facilities are, where we think the problem spots are going to be in the future, things that need to be addressed. And probably most important here, just continues the discussion prior to passing of the budget about what the rates are going to look like in the sewer fund. So I think tonight's a good opportunity. I think we've captured all the known topics around the sewer plants, the pump stations, the receiving building collection, our interface with Hewleton, other users, et cetera. So tonight's a, an opportunity. We've, the agenda's got some business in it, but most of it is all stuff that you've seen, we're gonna, we're gonna go through. So I'd really like to make sure we spend, you know, a good amount of time coursing through this. We will plan to, in the next meeting or the meeting after, to actually send in to you for acceptance the preliminary budgets for water and sewer. So again, looking for any feedback tonight, and then post this meeting as we finalize that preliminary budget. So when we get to it, you know, where we've got it sort of dialed into the, to the finer points that may need to be discussed further. So with that, so we'll start out with Shane and between Angela, Shane and Andrea, we'll, we'll tag team back and forth to get the presentation out and then questions answered.
Good evening. Start with the plan itself. The upgrades should be completed by the end of the year. We should redo, we should see reductions in the cost to operate the plant in 2024. We're gonna run the same this coming year, just to get the tweaks out of it, make sure everything's where it should be. After the plant's completed, per consent order, we have to redo our long-term patrol plan. That's where we're at with the plant right now. The pump stations, Main Street pump stations are built in 1963. We are in the process of putting that out to bid for a new pump station. South Water Street Pump Station was constructed in 1963, too. The site reactor pump station was built in 1982. The heavy industrial park, we took that over in 2007 from the Bridge and Port Authority. I'm looking for documents in Steve Lawrence's, too, to see the age of them for us. The same with the light industrial park, we took that over from the Bridge and Port in 2007, too. East River Pump Station was reconstructed in 2019. The waste receiving building, which is being built with the project in 2022, that'll be completed. It has three wells to receive stuff. The first well is designed to store way. It has a 19,000 gallon capacity. Well number two designed to store leachate and has an 11,000 gallon capacity. Well number three is designed to store septic and has an 11,000 gallon capacity. This will be a revenue source in the future for the city once it's online. The collection system, we have a combined sewer and storm collection system. Aging infrastructure, we need to start looking at separation of the sewer lines and storm lines. I'd like to put in a backflow prevention program, sort of like the sidewalk reimbursement program we have for the residents. We have 87 miles of sanitary sewer mains in the city. We have 1,120 sewer manholes that we maintain, 300 storm manholes, 16, or, no, I said, yeah, 300 storm manholes, 1,625 catch basins. The, right now, we're doing a preliminary engineering report on East David Street. That should be completed by before the end of the year.
Shane, before we get off this page, how old are the industrial park pump stations?
I'm not quite sure. Steve Lawrence is looking back at the records and I'm looking in the filing cabinet. We took them over in 2007.
Right.
From, yep, he's trying to get original documents and I'm looking. He thought he handed some over back then, but we're trying to find it.
Just a quick question, Shane, on the waste receiving buildings, the three wells, when do we anticipate those to be online?
I don't think they can come online till the project is complete and consent orders.
And we're still on target?
Still on target for the, we'll have, we have a meeting next week to finalize the target. It is, should be completed by the end of October, I think, where they pushed it out to. We've asked the contract under all circumstances to be done by the end of the calendar year, no matter what, gone completely. So we have, our next update is. Next week. It's next week. So we'll get a little better timeline. We, I mean, all things point to we're, we're on that track now, so people know. I think they're working on, they're working on the punch list right now, the majority of it.
Once you get enough data, can you forward it to us?
The next page is.
What's the difference between a storm manhole and a catch basin?
Catch basin, what's, catch the water, the manholes combines the main line that runs it there. The catch basin collects the water. Manhole is a solid cover, but catch basin is like the gray cover.
So the catch basins are for runoff?
Yes.
Okay.
On the next page, it's things that we need to look at in the near future, possibly most of it, a lot of it next year, and then the years coming. We need to have the long-term control plan updated. Supposed to be done by the end of this calendar year. We need to start working on that. Once the plant's up, up and running, it has to be rebuilt to where we're going to be in the future. We need to budget to separate the effluent from the stormwater overflow. Earlier in the year, we had the major storm. That's when the water started backing back up into the plant through the effluent line, because that connects to the overflow, CSO overflow. When there's too much, it doesn't allow it to leak. That could be a problem in the future. We are installing a slide gate valve on the front of it. I guess we call it the back of the plant as the water comes out, so that can't go back in.
It's a problem right now, right?
Yeah, so they're, they worked us up a number to, they had a spare gate there, so hopefully it'll be completed before, when the project's completed. South Water Street Pump Station, we just had a pump go down on that. It's in the same condition as Main Street. It's just a matter of, not if, when. We need to continue to budget and continue looking for grant opportunities to take care of that pump station. The waste receiving building, need to market the ability to accept waste in order to generate revenue. There's other smaller municipalities generating a sizable amount of money off their stations, and ours can handle a lot more than they can. It's something we need to market over the next year that we have it and let people in the North Country know. The collection system, separation of the sewer and the stormwater system, aging infrastructure, that's, as we know, the last storms we've had over this year have been more intense and it's caused a lot of havoc in neighborhoods. We need to establish a capital reserve to continue looking and continue looking for grants in the sewer budget. The backflow preventer program needs to be funded this year. Since all these issues happened, I think we've handed out, I don't know, 15, 20 or more backflow vendors. I mean, people are coming, you know, a few a week, or if not more, getting, getting them done in their house, which is a good thing. Helps them and it helps us equally. Inflow and infiltration assessment grant for $100,000 was applied for by Andrea. There will be a $20,000 match for the city for a total of $120,000 to see where the issues are in the system. They won't do the whole system, but it will, you know, point out a few troubled areas to try to narrow it down in those areas. Any questions?
So are we looking at any specific grants right now with that infrastructure bill that just got passed in Congress?
I know we applied for the inflow and infiltration one. Yeah, we were working more mainly with a lot of water, the lead service line inventory and replacement that's got to be done over the next few years. Kind of kept up to a priority right now.
Good evening. So on the next slides, directly following Shane, starts a series of three slides, which is put there more so just as a reminder of an analysis of the sewer back in February of 2021. So it was that time that we came before council and said, hey, this is a hypothetical scenario of what the sewer fund needs to do when the debt for this treatment plant is brought online. So that a debt amount ends up being roughly $32 million. There were three options outlaid that night. Option one was to adjust the rate yearly to balance the budget. And what ended up happening in that analysis, and at this point in time, we thought that the debt was coming online in 2022. So just backing up a little bit, we've closed on 19 million and we're getting ready to close on 12 more million in December, roughly. So at the end of 2022, all the long-term financing will be in place. So when you look at this, just fast forward a year, in option one, in order to balance that budget in that particular year, we had suggested a 46% increase in sewer rates at that time, based on what we knew two years ago. So the biggest difference between then and now is the amount of debt. We finally have settled on that number. Option two on the next slide was, yeah, go ahead.
So, so the amount of debt that we were looking at when we, when you made this presentation in 2021, is it lower now or higher than what it was then?
The annual payment is lower. I'd have to go back into the details of the work, but right now, what's being requested in debt service in this fund is 1.4 million, and these are all based, these projections were based on about 1.7 million at that time.
Per year.
Per year, for 30 years.
Okay.
Okay. So option two we put forth at that point in time was to adjust the rates to maintain a fund balance of 20%, but it didn't address the need of a capital fund to have a capital reserve. And I think after Shane's presentation, it's very evident that there are significant repairs to come to this fund in the near future. So if we were to adjust this every year, say we want to maintain a 20% of budget fund balance, in this projection, we would be looking at two years of increases totaling 29%. So that was option two. And then option three was to, and not practical, use the fund balance to maintain a constant rate increase. So in summary, at the end of each one of these, you know, you're looking in the city of roughly a $600 annual sewer payment from your users. So that's where we were projecting in 2021. Rolling forward approximately two years, we're really in no different situation, albeit I'm happy to report that the estimated increase that we would propose to balance this year's budget is not 46%, it is 25%. So reason being, again, we've discussed the change in the debt projection, so that's, that's a change right there. And then, you know, just trying to run these funds as efficiently as possible. Going into 2022, and I'll come back to this number, you had a fund balance in this particular fund of roughly $3 million. So the revenue projections that you're seeing in the 2023 draft preliminary budget do include an anticipated revenue from the Village of Hewleton. However, it's almost offset with the loss of revenue from the prison and United Helpers. And that was not anticipated back in 2021, so it, that's another curve there. This budget does maintain staffing levels compared to 2022. The new adjusted healthcare estimated increase of premiums is 21%. When we were here last time with the water budget, it was 33. So we're still continuing to try to drive it down a little bit. And also looking to reduce the amount of money being transferred to the general fund by 10%. And this does include the purchase of a Vector truck. So we have a third of that being charged to the water fund and a third of that will be charged to the sewer fund. So inside the capital lines is the purchase of this truck. With a 25% increase in rates, what that means for city residents, these are approximate numbers, your annual sewer will jump from 465 to 581.
Is, on your option two.
Yep.
Where it says that the two years with 20, that combined are 29, and then you say that Hewleton's projection, projections are 25% increased. Their 25 increased on top of the 29? So they'd be at 54%?
No, they're in line with everybody else. Like, but the metered rates are, those would just be the metered rates to Hewleton.
So if, if ours would go to 581 from 465, what would their rate be?
Their rate's different because it's a metered rate and it's based on k-gallons that they're producing. So I would have to, we're, we have an agreement with the Village of Hewleton that we will sell them the service, if you will, based upon our cost. And EDR is helping us currently, as we sit here today, determining what their rate will be per k-gallons.
But if, I mean, if, if theirs is equal to what our rates are, less because they've got meters. So on the backs of great pairs in Augustsburg, we'll pay $116 more than we were paying, and they'll just jump on and, 25%?
No, the metered, so the metered rates will increase in this model, in this budget, will increase 25% as well. So it's both for the un-metered sewer and the metered sewer.
So what's the dollar amount for Hewleton?
We, we, we don't know yet. We've got a, so. No, not going to give you.
What I'm saying is it just, it doesn't seem fair that if we fire up Hewleton and, so we've got this great revenue stream, and we're not getting revenue stream really any, and we're paying for the next 30 years and it's going up, up, up and up, and at one page you got 46%. There's nobody that live in Augustsburg that's going to afford to pay that kind of agreement.
It's, it's definitely not a, it's not a money-making revenue stream. The formula that was agreed upon, basically.
Why do we do it? If we should be in business to make money if we're taking in other people's stuff? I know, the line, the line knows it.
So the agreement was signed in, in 2019, 2018 or 2019, the agreement was signed. We'll, we'll have, we'll have what the rate will be rough soon. So the rate, ultimately what they've done, what they agreed to do at the time was extrapolate, just for simplicity purposes, the cost to treat. What, what are the costs that everybody has to pay to treat sewage as it passes through the station? The whole idea here was so that the Hewleton rate wasn't reflecting necessarily what, what costs to Augustsburg. For instance, our collection systems, our internal pumps, et cetera. What is the cost to roll a gallon of sewage through the wastewater treatment plant? You guys can jump in here if you remember better than I do. So bottom line is, every year what you'll do is you'll take our costs. So we'll establish our budget, we'll extrapolate the costs out of there that are costs that should be shared costs. And there's a spreadsheet of all the costs that were identified, and we validated that, and we think we're 98% accurate. Those are the costs that everybody would pay for the sewer to flow through. So once we establish our budget, then you have to extrapolate those costs and determine what they are, and that's how their rate will be figured. So as you raise our rates or our cost of doing business goes up, it will be reflected in those lines every year. So it, I, I don't want to say that it's, it's a little complex. It's just that there's another step to figure. It's not as simple as saying if our rate is $25, we're going to charge 25% on top of that. It's, it's not a simple formula like that.
Anyone, do you remember anything about when, when you guys worked on this plan?
The plan came together, well, before I got on, in March 2019. But, you know, it was, it was obviously very necessary that the sewer plant needed to be redone. And it was evident as we were putting fixes on it over the course of years prior to that. And ultimately, at the end of the day, it needed to be done.
Do you remember the agreement with, again, do you remember the agreement?
Not offhand, but I probably haven't. It just, I don't know, it just seems like, if anything, doing this whole plant, all this Hewleton, looking at Lisbon, that Augustsburg should have got some type of detrays for us, or something.
I mean, if you, when you factor in.
Something that would have cost you.
Well, when you factor in, once they come online and they're paying, it, it, it's money, it's money coming in. So the whole idea is it's covering the cost to, to, to treat what will come through. I think when you see the formula, it'll, it'll make sense. But I, but I'm, I'm saying though, there isn't a profit margin added to that, which I think is what you're all looking for. Bottom line, they extrapolated out and created a formula that said, what are the costs directly related to treating sewers? So there, they have their plant. We don't have, we don't pay anything for, for how they treat, how their collection point runs. It, it runs downstream to us. So at that point, when it enters our plant, what are the costs associated with treating that, that water? Not, not to be confused again with our, our entire system, which is what I think the selling point was. So the people of Hewleton didn't think they were helping to pay for our internal lines and pump stations, et cetera. But I think they did a good job on capturing within the plants, again, all those costs that are associated with specifically running the plant. And it's, and the complexity here isn't, isn't complex to understand. It's just there's, there's a lot of parts. So when you break this one down, what you're trying to do now is take our total cost of doing business, wastewater plant, lines in the street, pump stations, labor, et cetera, all those things, and extrapolate what is specifically being used of those costs to treat anybody's sewer who's passing it, whether we decide to take on Lisbon or Hewleton or anybody else. What, what are those costs associated with treating the sewer? So I, it's, it's another part, but we'll, I'll send you the, we'll send everyone the agreement. What I was waiting for, and we just haven't gotten it from EDR, we expect it this week, is the updated figures plugged into that spreadsheet. So you'll be able to see all the costs that are on there and then what the current costs are. We were going to use 2021's numbers, because we've got the entire year, but I think what we're going to do now, we'll have enough data. We'll use that as an estimation, but before we get to finality, we'll know the 2022 numbers enough to be able to use those to project. Because we, again, we'll owe it to Hewleton soon to tell them just that, what, what is it going to cost for, for sewage?
The issue is, the issue is, we, we do this at, at cost, and then in 30 years, it's going to cost $100 billion to rebuild that plant, and that's all on us.
So, no, so let's say this, and this is where we have to come to, and this is sort of our fault if we don't do it. A capital fund to replace those components that are necessary to treat sewage is part of that budget. The problem now is, we don't put anything on that budget. So we can very well charge other people for it when we're not doing it. We've got to establish those capital funds and say, okay, if, if we're contributing, if the city says it's $100,000 a year that needs to go into a capital fund for potential upgrades, maintenance and repair of the wastewater treatment plant, that needs to be in there in budget, and then Hewleton pays their percentage of that cost. So if it's $100,000 a year and they owe 8 or 10%, whatever it is towards that, so, so, no, you would get that actually as, as part of, yeah.
So it spreads out, the idea was, when we talked about Hewleton and possibly Aspogati or Lisbon, is trying to get more entities using the facility and maybe even creating a water district. Well, it does create a water district. And so everybody's kind of paying for this project and future projects, you know? Is there a big disparity between outside water use and what should be outside sewer use coming in? You know what I mean? Because I know that if you try to put water up on the hill, outside the old nursing home, it's extremely expensive. By the time you even pay your rate, it's, it's extremely expensive. It's, it is, and.
Well, remember, Steve.
To see the difference between those two as compared to this, because I don't, will we have these numbers for Hewleton before we actually do this?
We'll, we'll, we can use 2021's for sure. I want to try to get closer, because our numbers went up in 2022 to make sure we're, but yeah, we'll have, we'll have more finance. You'll know, you'll know what our projection for outside revenue is going to be, broken down to all the outside. And to answer your question on the water, it's the same, it'll be the same methodology. If somebody wants to build something outside the city, we're not going to pay to run the line. They're gonna, they're gonna run a line to where we say, here's your connection point. So again, it'll be the same agreement. What does it cost for us to prepare a gallon of water and send it down that pipe? What costs are associated with that versus what is our internal cost versus the cost of, of, of generating the clean water? So it would be the same methodology when we, if we start doing that. Of course, of course. Again, whatever is, whatever is related to that particular part of the operation.
The thing we have to look out for is the cheese plant has a, is a, is a much bigger user because of their biological oxygen demand. In the city, there's an industrial user fee that's different from what regular people pay. And I like to make sure that they're metered and that they're monitored for their biological oxygen, oxygen demand, because that will increase our costs here. And that's a big user that would be coming online from Hewleton. Because that will increase our costs here. And that's a big user that would be coming online from Hubelton.
Well, check. So know the way we structured this too was our customer is the Village of Hubelton. So they they have to manage Lusardo, et cetera, within the regulatory parameters that are set up. In other words, we don't, we won't manage anyone regularly. Your your point, Council Rich, is is well taken and and really that's their concern. And whether, because Hubelton also has to monitor that like they do currently now. If Lusardo is taking up too much of the capacity. So then people can't send toilet sewer down the drain because it's there. So they're gonna have to manage that. They have an amount of capacity that we've agreed upon. And part of the storage uh reserve that was built, was built specifically uh for them. And and partly for that purpose because of the ebb and flow of the plant. But uh, I'll add that to the to the moment. We're gonna have to meet with them soon to, as we get closer to this. Because I think we've gotten quite a few questions from Hubelton residents um about this. So we're gonna, we're gonna refresh their their council and staff's knowledge on this as well as we get closer to it.
What's the actual dollar value projection from from Hubelton?
In this budget, um for Hubelton, we have projected, and again, it's not tied to any updated rate. It was around, it's bundled in with another number, hundred and twenty-five thousand. So I did want to point that out. We have a lot of discussion going on regarding Hubelton. Um, but it's a very small, small fraction.
And what percent of our revenues is that?
Well, it would be that divided by three point nine million. So.
It's very small. Yeah, meaningful.
Yeah.
And we just wanna, we have to make sure that what we're getting from them, from the cheese plant, doesn't increase our costs and our costs to our customers.
That's right.
That's the most important thing. And I think, I think the uh, the loss of the correctional facility was a bigger number than that.
I did the analysis in preparing the budget. Um, I would say, memory serves me correctly, they're about even. You know, I don't know that it's dollar for dollar, but there certainly is not a huge disparity between the two numbers.
I thought they were over a hundred and something in water and sewer.
I would have to look back at the work. I didn't bring it with me tonight.
And then United Helpers, they were on water and sewer as well?
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
We have, if I can just jump in, as long as we're on this topic about side users. So we, the agreements uh indicates. People that are along this line, businesses, individuals can request to tie into it. So we're working with that now. Andy and I are gonna, are gonna work with Dan quickly to get some numbers of what the potential is there. But I I understand the the agreement wasn't intended to cover New York State law and all the, all the things that are already codified. So it it's not really as simple as saying, hey, your sewer line is running across the front of my property. Do I have permission to cut into it? Uh, likely what will need to occur is, is a special district will be formed under the, under the guise of of some government entity, not us. So for instance, most of those people would be in the town of Oswegowatch. So likely, the town of Oswegowatch would pull up and determine. You know, what would be the area, a special district could be formed. It would have to go to referendum, all those types of things. So um, if you get some calls about that, no, we feel that a couple have got one written request already to consider hooking up to it. But I, I don't, I don't think it'll be in our interest to to take kind of a one-off user here and there. I think that it'll just uh, it'll grow, it'll snowball. It'll be difficult to assimilate a rate to one person here, one person there. So um, but we are, we are working on that because I think uh there's some requests will come through from that corridor where that line is, is uh, is is running through. And we're doing the same, it's the same research for if United Helpers were to build, you know, on the other end going out there, how would we, how do we sell, you know, water to them? And potentially anybody else that would be along that line. So so we are, we are working on that now.
Okay, on the next page is, I think I skipped one up here. Yes, so the, just a few more budgetary highlights. Uh, twenty twenty-three will be the year that we start the repayment of the sewer debt. Um, that is adding approximately one point one five million to the budget. Um, and just to give you sort of the breakdown on that, um.
You said one point four earlier, is it one point four or one point?
If I said one point four, that was the total debt service, I believe, in this one. But of that total number. Um, there is a million dollars, and these are rounded, a million dollars in principal going out. On this thirty-year note and about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of interest. So that's where that one point one five zero number comes in. Now, the interest portion of this loan is what's about to close. So these are just estimates. Um, that interest rate is tied to the market. So I use the rate that was appropriate right now, but um, interest rates are going up. So, um, this budget.
Is it a fixed rate?
I believe, Council Reach, when they close, the rate is fixed, yes, but it's determined on the market at the date of closing, which is early December.
So you're saying it could go up between now and December?
Sure. This budget does include the cost to repair the Main Street pump station and the cost to complete a long-term control plan. The Main Street pump station project is one point eight million dollars. There is a grant for that. Um, a portion of that will be borne by the city. Uh, the long-term control plan, the number that we have in the budget is a very, very rough guess. I would say um, some of this is contingent on getting work from an. There's just a lot of factors to go into getting that, um, getting work from another engineering firm that had done some work previously, or if we're starting from scratch. So that number is extremely fluid. Um, it's in the budget right now at two hundred thousand dollars. So with that, the fund balance appropriation that we're recommending is eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, six hundred and eighty-five of that to cover the Main Street pump station. And two hundred to be related to the long-term control plan. Should either one of these numbers change? Because it is a fund balance appropriation, we will not need to change revenue. We would just need to change the appropriated fund balance. That's what's balancing out those two expenses right there.
So it costs two hundred thousand dollars to update the long-term?
We don't know, Council Reach. It was, it is literally just a guess and that's why at this point, no, I wouldn't say a guess. I mean, it's educated certainly. Um, but at this point, um, we don't have the formal proposal that we would need to put a solid number in the budget. It is just something that we know needs to be done. So appropriating it out of fund balance, um, like I said, it wouldn't. If that comes in at fifty thousand, we're just gonna lower the fund balance appropriation. We're not gonna need to change the revenue to cover that.
And what is the significance or impact of updating, what is a long-term control plan?
So it's part of the consent order. Uh, it it all really surfe- surrounds around the issue we've been talking about controlling the. Controlling the flow into the plant. So how how are we going to control the flow into the plant? Separate lines, build build additional, you know, catch basin gardens, you know, whatever, whatever our plan's gonna be. So uh, we're, we wanna, hopefully we'll have some solid numbers before we go to to final with this, but we've, we've gotta move forward with it. Uh, we won't be able to close out our consent order without demonstrating that we've, we've done all that.
So just while I'm thinking of it, a good example is uh, the long-term control plan. Theoretically could could include, so the state owns thirty percent of the land in in Augsburg, the city proper. Thirty percent of the land. So that means they're responsible for thirty percent of the. The water that's coming, you know, that isn't separated. So that should be put on them. And they also, you know, I don't know what streets that the state owns and maintains and which ones have been separated. Uh, I assume Main Street was done at one time, maybe not. You know, was State Street done? I know Patterson was. But if there's any state roads, um, you know, that that should be on there. The state's putting a consent order on us and telling us what we need to do. We should articulate in that plan what they need to do to limit their flow into our plan.
Okay, any other questions? All right, the next slides deal with sort of uh, the detail at a very high level. You can see the anticipated change in revenue. Um, in between, from the twenty twenty-two budgeted revenues to the twenty twenty-three draft numbers. Uh, between unmetored and metered sewer, we're expecting approximate increase of eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. There is the eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the appropriated fund balance that I just spoke about. And the government grants that are in there relate only to the Main Street pump station. So there's one million dollars from the Northern Border Regional Commission and a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from a SAM grant. Giving us the city's cost of that project of six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Interest and penalties is budgeted in accordance with history in this fund. Uh, total revenue is five million eight hundred and nine thousand to include one point one of grants. Okay. The next slide takes you through the appropriations by department. So sewer administration. Uh, we do see an increase there of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Lot of that, most of that is related to the long-term control plan. That's where it's sitting in that line there. Um, the maintenance line has gone from five hundred and forty thousand of budgeted to two point five million year over year. And that is related to the Main Street pump station. The water pollution um jumps up eight percent. That department, um, that would just be mostly increased cost there. The next item to point out, you can see the impact um year over year of your debt service. So twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-two, we had approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of principal and interest payments coming out of this fund. We budgeted seven hundred and sixty thousand in the twenty twenty-two year. Little bit of uncertainty of when that first nineteen million dollars was going to close. So we had put something in that budget. And we ended up using that um, in the twenty twenty year to prepay. On that note before closing, while it was in short-term status to reduce the payment for the next thirty years. So we did use that money. Um, sitting in your twenty twenty-three column is one million four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. That includes the existing bond payments as well as the new debt coming on board. So your total expenses are five million eight hundred and nine thousand. The next slide is the same exact numbers, just cut a different way. Um, we look at personnel services, personal services. Um, those are our salaries. There is a slight decrease in there. Some of what's happening there is the mix of your employees. Um, there were two employees that retired and then we bring those on the lower salaries. So there is no reduction of staff in this budget, even though the uh, numbers have gone down. It's different. It's just relating to the mix of new versus seasoned employees. Um, the capital outlay does include, um, it went from seventy-nine thousand year prior budget to two million, call it fifty thousand. That's related to the pump station and also the vector truck. And there is a dump truck in there as well. Other contractual expenses in this display, um, that does include the long-term control plan. So you'll see a jump there from seven hundred and ninety-one thousand to one million thirty-five. We've explained the debt service increase, the fringe benefits increase relates mostly, if not all, to health insurance. And then you'll see um, the transfer to other funds being three hundred and sixty-six thousand. That's the money we would anticipate. Transferring to the general fund for the services that they provide to water sewer. On the next slide, our, is the breakdown of the fringe benefits, looking at New York State retirement, uh, social security taxes. The biggest one here is the health insurance raising from a hundred and sixty-eight thousand to a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So there is an increase there. There's been a little bit of a change of employees who took insurance versus those who take the buyout. So that increase isn't the twenty-one percent that we write about, but more of a mix of what's actually happening inside that fund. Um, but you will also see the cost of health insurance has been modified from the water presentation. To include a twenty-one percent increase. So the premiums in the city, um, useful numbers will be twelve thousand for a single person. Twenty-five thousand for a two-person and thirty-four thousand for a family.
That's it, the twenty-one percent increase?
That is correct, yes. The last slide includes the recommendations for twenty twenty-three. We've already spoke about the need to increase the water rates. I'm sorry, the sewer rates. And the recommendation is a minimum of twenty-five percent. There does need to be a capital, multi-year capital plan. Um, that addresses the aged infrastructure and the equipment in the sewer fund. And also um, creating a capital reserve. Uh, right now, your fund balance is approximately three million dollars. This budget appropriates eight hundred and eighty-five, bringing that down to two point one. There's projects out there that are not cheap projects to do. So I would recommend a reserve healthy of a million, leaving your fund balance to a little over a million dollars. Um, that's unassigned and uh, slightly over twenty percent of your operating budget without grant money.
Yeah, I don't think the fund balance should go below a million.
Right, and the proposal I just walked through leaves it probably at one point one, one point two.
So that original option of forty-six percent has changed to twenty-five percent?
Correct. So we sharpened our pencil.
Yeah. Sharpen it some more.
I can try. Any other question? Thank you.
Good evening, Council in Augsburg. Uh, I had a speech prepared tonight, but I'm sure many of you noticed as I walked in, a member of the O P D pulled me outside and talked to me. And uh, due to what they explained to me, I might, might uh, leave that part out of my speech. And best regards to them. It's unfortunate that they have to see someone come into a meeting like this to uh, to do the right thing. But it is what it is. Uh, last time I was in here, I spoke about a situation across from eight twenty-four Pearl Street. About a parking issue that still has not been resolved. Currently, there's a a trailer parked there right now with a business lawnmower on it. Um, like I said, this individual was uh, kinda given granted free use to this property. I believe in exchange for mowing the lawn for the D P W, it's been going on for the last five years. I've resided on Pearl Street. Uh, I brought this up to the D P W. I had some people get mad at me and state that, well, my dog uh, quote-unquote shits all over the city property. I've, I've never been ticketed for that. I've never had a complaint. I don't know where that came from. Uh, this piece of property also had some markers. They were much like uh, highway markers on the side of the highway, just a four or five-foot post with a small reflector on it. And they were removed this spring. A member of the D P W told me a plow truck with a sidewing hit them and that they weren't replacing them. That entire truck would be completely off the road for that to happen. And uh, our dump trucks here don't have sidewings on them. So hopefully we can figure this out. Uh, I can't believe I'm back to council with this again. The next thing I'd like to talk about is I'm glad to uh, read some recent comments or or media posts from the mayor to the media. Regarding the Constitution of the United States and uh, what took place in this meeting before I uh, arrived here. Um, I find this uh, nothing but theater and and honestly, pure comedy. It's hilarious. Uh, like I said, I brought to you as not long ago, I was expelled from these chambers. Um, and I still haven't received any legal documentation as to why that was. And it was for a period of over two weeks. I talked to some uh, private attorneys. They're, they're really interested in this. They don't even want any money from me. They're so interested in this. Like I said to you as before, I'm not, the last thing I'd ever want to do is sue the city I grew up in. But uh, the fact of the matter is that it took place and I brought this to you and nothing has happened because of it. Uh. I find it really hard to believe that the majority of this council hasn't talked about this with the office of the city manager and the office of the city attorney. Behind closed doors. Uh, a lot of other people have accused you of having your own meetings. And and no one's reached out to me about this. So for any who's to say that you hold the Constitution of the United States in regards, like I said, that's nothing but theater and pure comedy. And I see you looking down there at your, your checklist and everything, Mayor, but we all know recently you haven't had the greatest luck. In regards to the law yourself. Um, we all make mistakes, but it makes me sick to know that you guys gave. The city manager a fifty thousand dollar buyout. We all make mistakes, but it makes me sick to know that you guys gave the city manager a fifty thousand dollar buyout when something this, this obvious and all the other things that have taken place have happened. The fact that five different department heads or four, whatever it was, couldn't handle a parking issue without me being referred to the city manager by all of them. It, it, it's kind of sounds like a dictatorship to me. How, how can five different departments not handle a parking issue? And still to this day, if I, if I call and talk to people about it, the phone gets hung up on me. So I will also recommend to the city manager that he doesn't make it public about his future employment endeavors. Because I made sure to, to point this out to On Alaska, Alaska, and they told me they were flooded with phone calls and that they weren't going to hire him. Everything I referred them to about was what happened in these chambers is public information. So thank you all. Have a good night.
I do not see any hands raised. We do. We have one letter, Mayor. Dear Mayor and members of Augsburg City Council, on behalf of the Augsburg Land Bank Corporation, please accept this letter as an expression of interest to purchase surplus city-owned properties that were not sold at the most recent August second, twenty twenty-two public auction. Specifically, the Board of Directors is interested in pursuing grant funds through Phase Two of the New York State Homes and Community Renewal Land Bank Initiative for building stabilization, demolition, pre-development, and technical assistance funding. Phase Two is anticipated to become available in October, twenty twenty-two, following the conclusion of Phase One funding, which is for general administrative costs and property maintenance, and closes on September fourteenth. While the majority of surplus city-owned properties are vacant, non-conforming lots, members of the Board of Directors conducted site visits on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two of properties with structures including tax map number five nine point zero two two dash two dash nine with an address of four oh five King Street, five nine point zero two one dash one dash thirty, five twenty-nine King Street, five nine point zero two three dash eight dash ten, eleven twenty-seven Pickering Street, five nine point zero two three dash nine dash nine, nine thirty-five State Street, and four eight point zero seven three dash one dash ten, nineteen oh seven J Street. The Board of Directors proposes including each of these properties in an application for funding this fall for work to begin in the spring of twenty twenty-three. Based on the most recent site visits, the Boards would pursue rehabilitation of four oh five King Street, five twenty-nine King Street, and eleven twenty-seven Pickering Street. The application request would also include a request for demolition funds to be used at nineteen oh seven J Street and nine thirty-five State Street. We would like to delay purchasing these properties from the city now so that acquisition costs can be covered by grant funds. We greatly appreciate your consideration and continued support of our mission to return properties back into productive, tax-generating neighborhood assets. Most sincerely, Phil Cosmo, Chairman, Augsburg Land Bank Corporation.
Next, we have our consent agenda. The name is illuminated in General Fund Warrant number sixteen dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of nine hundred ninety-four thousand, fifty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Wyverd Warrant number sixteen dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of zero dollars. Capital Fund Warrant number sixteen dash point twenty-two, the amount of eight hundred forty-seven thousand, seventy-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. We have the fund warrant fifteen dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of eight thousand five hundred sixty-six thousand, seventy-two cents. Community Renewal Warrant number sixteen dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of zero dollars. Audited, be same hereby. Our order paid. Is on move.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A resolution to authorize the submission of a round six Restore New York Grant Application. Whereas the City of Augsburg desires to prepare a round six Restore New York Communities Initiative Grant Application for twelve twenty-three Pickering Street, formerly Hackit's Hardware, to rehabilitate and/or reconstruct the vacant, abandoned, and surplus commercial property. And whereas the fifty thousand, thirty-one square foot mixed-use building is owned by the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad, and whereas approximately thirty-six thousand square feet of the facility is vacant, commercial space in need of significant rehabilitation. Whereas Pitcher Noble, Inc. is desirous of purchasing the property at twelve twenty-three Pickering Street for the purpose of rehabilitating and opening a retail operation within the unused thirty-six thousand square foot portion of the building and leasing back to OVRS the portion of the property that is currently used for their operations. And whereas the Augsburg City Council held a public hearing on the proposed Restore Six application and property assessment list on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and desires to support this project through the submission of a round six Restore New York application, being eligible to apply for up to two million dollars based on population. And whereas this application requires a ten percent match and a five hundred dollar application fee, which built, will be provided by Pitcher Noble, Inc. Whereas this application will promote smart growth, smart growth principles of infill development that take advantage of and enhance existing infrastructure and facilities that will attract, create, and sustain future employment opportunities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council authorizes the city manager to submit a grant application for the proposed rehabilitation of vacant commercial property located at twelve twenty-three Pickering Street as listed in the property assessment list. And be it further resolved that if awarded, the city manager or his designee is authorized to enter into any necessary contracts to accept and administer this grant expeditiously.
The summary statement says one million, two hundred thousand million.
That's presently what we're looking at for the budget for this particular project. But the application has a maximum award ask of two million. So should that change? That's why the resolution is worded the way it is.
No, I'm just saying we should strike the word million.
Oh, sorry. See what you're saying.
No big deal. Then it's just a summary statement. That don't really matter.
It has to get uploaded, so we'll, we'll crack that.
All right. So are we applying for two million or?
Well, right now, the award is, the budget is one point two.
Sounds good. Can't wait.
And you said that as a result, we couldn't apply for the cheese plant, right? Because we, we decided to go with this.
That's correct. So we submitted two letters of intent. Letters of intent are required for any property that you're considering. We listed only two properties on our property assessment list. Both properties were reviewed and essentially approved, but they were both considered standard projects. And each municipality is eligible to submit one standard project, which has a maximum request of two million dollars, and one special project. Those are five million dollar projects. So both of ours were reviewed as, as standard projects, and we can only submit one.
Did anybody move this yet?
Yes, yes, sir.
I think the land bank ought to take over the cheese plant.
I will say that today EPA announced their round of cleanup grants. The notice of award of funding available was, was today. Those applications are due November twenty-second. I think that the cheese plant is a very good candidate for that particular application. And they're, because of the federal stimulus funding, there is actually now no match. There used to be a twenty percent match requirement, which is waived for this funding round.
That would be great if they could look into that. And that be included, I assume we didn't go to bid. We, the plant didn't come down, but what, what happened with the bid that we approved and everything?
We didn't, we haven't gone forward with that. They adjusted their price after having looked at it, and we have sort of hit the pause button on that particular project for.
So was it a quote or a bid?
It was a, a bid, a request for bid.
Generally, when you put a bid in.
We gave them the opportunity to come look at the site, and they had missed several things. So it was in everybody's best interest to get a new price, which is significantly different than what was submitted previous.
And a land bank can do an industrial site like that?
Well, they can. I, I wasn't really referring to the land bank. The city is eligible to apply for EPA funding. The land banks in New York State can, it's a little off of this resolution, but they can set up corporations specifically, within their corporations specifically to deal with brownfields. Very few land banks in New York State have done that, but they do have that power as an authority in New York State.
And then, and there was a tremendous amount of money in this year's state budget for land banks too. So I mean, if.
So as the letter just said there, right now, HCR Homes and Community Renewal is, applications are due Feb, or February, yeah, getting a little ahead of myself, September fourteenth. And it is, this first phase is for administrative costs only. We anticipate Phase Two to follow and to be announced in October. So I don't know the limitations or what the parameters will be for that second phase. That is for actual implementation, rehabilitation, demolition, et cetera. This is the first funding that has been awarded through the New York State budget. So I, I really could not speak to what the parameters will be for that round of funding that we anticipate to come out in October.
Do the board to look into it. That'd be great.
The Board intends to submit an application due on Wednesday for Phase One. And then with the anticipation that we would also apply for Phase Two. I mean, I think that letter articulates what they were hoping to do with that funding, should it be available.
Were there three bids for the cheese plant?
We received two.
We had two?
One was from Texas. It was just under a million dollars.
Were these guys up to almost a million? Under, under walkthrough and missing all those things they missed?
They're much closer to a million than they were two hundred thousand, but I don't know that we're not moving forward. I just, we're just not moving forward at this moment in time.
We only allotted so much. And so at the time, if you remember, we talked about it, the very same day we got the bid, the Restore program. So we wanted to, we wanted to miss out on the opportunity, potentially restore. We got the Hackit's project. That certainly burned the hand in the long term. That made sense. So it's just been a combination of this and that. Luckily today, the CPA grant popped out. Our project appears like it will score high for that. This program hasn't been funded in a while, so if we can get anybody else's money to, you know, to get this before we consider, well, we'll have to be a bond, you know, from the city to, to do it. And I think that some of the money that, you know, we, we hoped the last couple of years had, hasn't been there, we're hoping now. So let's, let's get it there and run these to dry. We wouldn't have put the project to council having known Restore New York was going to be funded was that day. We had this bid and, you know, I think it was well-intentioned. The contractors here, they're doing us some really good work in the residential area. If you've seen some of the projects they've done, they're vast, clean, but cheese plant was a, was a much bigger hole from that. And our engineering analysis work on that has been predominantly centered around the tanks, what's in and removing that has waste of. There's, there's a lot there in those grounds. One of the things Andrea's team's working on now is trying to get the whole cost, you know, down to, to real proper grade. So what are the foundations that are there? What's it going to take to revitalize them? You know, so the, the site is again, something that someone can come look at to develop, not what are they going to continue demoing prior to, to develop. So I think we're, we're getting a lot better information. I'll spend a little bit of money. We'll, we'll be back to you soon, I think, to talk about using some of the money we talked, demo it, finish the whole analysis. So as we're working through these grant programs, we're talking pretty, pretty concrete with the estimates.
Which it seems like it'd be nice to, even if you spend a million dollars, it sets you up in a better stance for downtown revitalization. You get ten, spend a million, get ten. I mean, and we're the last ones to get it because everyone else around us has already gotten it.
We'll talk about this later.
Thank you.
Shane, do you have a, your equipment couldn't take down that old Holland pump building?
We couldn't do that because of the asbestos in the building.
There's asbestos in there?
There's, there's both friable and non-friable asbestos, as well as lead paint. So there's hazardous materials in the building that prohibit us from doing anything in kind.
Nothing easy about this project. That's why I still said that this was not a matter of somebody not having the word with all to do it. It's just, it's, it's a monster.
And what the contamination on the adjacent site across the road?
We did apply for and receive an environmental site assessment grant from Department of State in twenty nineteen. This property is one of the four properties that we received funding to do environmental site assessments on. That's some of the work that the city manager is alluding to that we would like to get done this fall because it would strengthen an application to EPA. Not that we ever want to find contamination, but if there is additional contamination in the soils or the concrete, it would be good to find out about that now and include that in the cleanup application.
Well, that was a pretty hot site across the road, wasn't it?
There are at least six groundwater monitoring wells that are associated with the former manufactured gas site, which is just adjacent.
Yeah, so it would be good to know if they're putting it up on our property, if we ever want to redevelop it after it's torn down. So yeah, glad you're doing that.
We devote, we need to vote.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Joe Johnson Equipment to purchase a two thousand twenty-two England street sweeper.
I'll move that for discussion.
When's the last time we bought a street sweeper?
Two thousand eleven.
It's not, I ain't doing it anymore. So I'm. It's been the last thirty years.
How many do we have? How many street sweepers do we have?
One.
And what's wrong with it?
The hole underneath of it's fallen out and it's hard to get parts for it.
Just a good time to buy or the price is way up?
They're not up too far. Actually, they called me Thursday night and said there was about a seven thousand dollar increase. And I told them we couldn't buy it unless they kept the price, or they kept the price.
Told them what?
I told them we couldn't buy it unless they kept the same price.
And they agree?
They agreed.
Is this like a state contract?
Yes. Yep. And we'll be using chip funds to purchase it.
Okay, great. All of it?
Yep. There'll be no, no out-of-pocket expense to the city.
No worries.
He's got to lead with that, Shane.
Anybody move this?
Yes, sir. Reach them, Powers. So now it's time to vote.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Approved.
This is a resolution calling for a public hearing and public notice on a proposed ordinance amending chapter one forty-nine of the City of Augsburg Municipal Code entitled Parks.
I'll move that. A second.
The public hearing would be held on the twenty-sixth day of September at six P M.
It deals with the amount of time that it's open?
So this would codify what we talked about at the last meeting and then correct a couple of things in the, in the chapter. It would, all of our, our parks close at eleven, with the exception of the Green Belt Park. And so you may recall that recently, the Chief of Police. And so you may recall that recently the chief of police asked that we, under his authority, we are currently closing it at eleven, along with all the other parks, which we have the authority to do. But we do think that that is a long, long-term, that is a good change to the, to the code. And we obviously have the ability to keep it open later for events like Seaway Festival or anything that we permit. It also does correct some of the language. Specifically, we define where the state park is, which it no longer is located there. And since we're making changes through the Ready Project, it won't be located there. So it, it removes that. It updates and streamlines the language and dates to be consistent with what we use on the forms for the marina. There's no change in the dates. It just doesn't list every month individually. It just references May to October. We've updated seeing eye dog to service animals, sort of just done some cleaning up of the, of the chapter in general.
To what hour do we staff the, the Biskie Center?
Nine.
Till nine?
Mayor Scally.
Yeah.
Counsel Dilva.
Yes.
Counsel Fisher.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Counsel Rege.
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item will be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A resolution in support of a 2022 St. Lawrence County Centralized Biosolids Composting Facility, Facility Feasible Study.
Move that. Second. What does it mean that we would participate as a municipal partner?
In speaking with Christian from the developer, they're just looking for our information, how much we bring in and how much we put out of solids. They just want our data. They're just looking to see if it's feasible for them. If it goes through, it could be a considerable savings for the city as we pay, because ours is a truck ours to grassland now at a considerable cost. It looks like it could be a really good project for the North Country. Savings wise would be tremendous for us. At the wastewater treatment plant.
Counsel Dilva.
Yes.
Counsel Fisher.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Counsel Rege.
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Scally.
Yeah.
Approved.
Mayor, first item, city beach update. Council, you have, and this all provided to the public, all the data from this year's testing, communication with the health department on the beach. We will present our recommendation on the beach project as part of the 2023 budget. As you read through this, you'll see our numbers were significantly better than last year. In fact, the only high numbers we had were post that, that storm that we had in May, where we had that significant rainfall. So ultimately, what the health department would like us to be able to further define is what, what causes that number to go up? Is it downflow from the river? Is it a significant discharge pipe that's, that's coming out there? So I think we've compiled, you know, the to-dos. I, I don't think this has been a, a bad project from the get-go. I just think that as we talked about when we started a couple of years ago with it, there, there was likely to be some analysis. Again, I think the, the beach was closed for any number of, of acute reasons and then probably some, some more long-term reasons. But I think, I think now, the last two years of testing and, and preparation, we've, we understand, you know, a lot more what they're looking for. Certainly with the sewer plant coming fully online, if that is a potential source because of C F, CSO outfalls, that's causing that temporary increase in the EKOLI numbers to go up at the beach, then we expect that to, to certainly be reined in. Of course, we've been talking about getting the storm water off so we're not, you know, flushing things in during storms. And then the only other aggravating factor that we need to isolate a little bit further is there is a large, Shane, the forty-eight inches? Forty-eight inch drain pipe. We think probably the drains at the psychiatric center, that's where it originates from. So it all comes in there. So a significant amount of ground, you know, that contaminants are, are being flushed through. So, so it's a matter of doing some sampling post-rain events right there at the edge of that pipe to determine what, if anything, is coming out of that. That sort of isolate that or bring that in. And then the only, the only logical source after that would be, again, downflow from CSO outfalls from, from the, from the treatment plant. So again, as you, as you look at this data, I think you'll see here, we, we know a lot more. The numbers post any storm were, were good. All, all the numbers were, were in fact excellent. For the health department to issue a permit, they want to be able to understand what, again, what could be aggravating factors. So what they say to us, you know, based on your data, you need to divert that water from that pipe to somewhere else. Or post the storm, you've got to close the beach for twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours, whatever, whatever it might be. So. We'll, we'll, we'll report out here, we're at the end of August, so we'll be able to report out what we spent this year on the testing and analysis. You know, and then what the total investment is to investigate in the potential opening of the beach. But I, I still think it's a good project. I, I don't, I don't know that we have a better alternative in the city that is going to be less work, less upfront cost, et cetera. So, you know, I.
So they do have latitude where they let you, you know, like put in a requirement that you have to close the beach for twenty-four hours after a significant event?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the, the health department will establish supremacy for most anything. Again, this is not, you know, we're not the only beach that's down, down river from a sewage plant. We're not the only beach that has issues if, if, you know, there's too many geese floating around. So I just think it's, it's just a matter of understanding. And the one thing they, they spoke specifically to us is they, they don't know and don't understand which, and again, the increase of the numbers on that one report, was it because of CSO outfall coming, you know, down river? Or was it that pipe in fact injecting it right there? Because if you look at the immediate days following, it, it drops right down. So, so I, I think we're really down to determining that from a, from a usage perspective. If you look at all the things the health department laid out, the only other thing they, they put in this year's report that was, they told us this year, which is fine, was that we also weren't sampling during the time of year the beach would be in use, which sort of precipitated the whole idea. We were sampling prior to, so we could get a permit to use it during the month. So, so again, I think we're, we're collecting all that data. We'll continue to collect data. And, and again, I think we'll talk to council at budget time. But I, I don't, I think, I think we, you know, we're, we could be, we could be close here. And again, I think, you know, for all the talk about trying to rush to open the beach, et cetera, everyone sees now it's just not possible. The health department has a very strict set of guidelines and parameters. They are the gateway to this. The city has no direct control whether we open or close that beach without the health department. So this is the system doing what it's supposed to do. The health department is, you know, is ensuring the, the health. But I think these numbers here reflect what, what council would want to see and what the public would want to see that on a daily basis. You know, the water there is very, very clean, very clear and, and pure.
And Shane, is that outfall, is that just for the border station or is that the psych center as well?
I, I would, if I had to throw a guess out, my guess is it's not that pipe. I guess it, it is, is we had, we knew, we knew that day of the storm and we had significant, you know, overflow and CSO dumping. I mean, I don't, it's not a, not a doubt in my mind at this point, likely it's from that. If, I think, had it been a matter of routine, more water coming from that, we would have seen elevated readings on many other days because that pipe is right there dropping the water into where we're sampling. So I think if it were contamination because of runoff, unapproved runoff, if you will, because Shane said it's storm water. It shouldn't have anything else in it but storm water. So I think, I, I think generally it likely is the CSO dumps that are, that are causing it. So, so, you know, maybe that's next year, we have that under control, or at least we have a parameter in place if we get so much rain such a period of time. Or something, as we start to put the long-term control plan in place, once it's developed and we're reducing those CSO dumps into the, into the river, then it becomes more, more feasible. But I, I think we're, you know, we're coming down to it. There isn't anything else there that's bad. The facilities are good. You know, we've had some discussion about improving and, and making handicap access acceptable or accessible. I think, you know, those are, those are all things that are, that are doable. So again, I, we'll talk about it again during budget, but I, I think we've come this far. I'd hate to see us, you know, stop now. So just in front of council is the current status. I think I emailed this to all of you. I don't think anything's changed from that, just as far as the, the current ARPA money that we have out there to approval of the projects. And we continue to work this every day. We, we will be through at the end of this week with the first income level critical projects and then moving into the, to the second batch. This amount of money right here is just the amount of that ARPA that we have outlaid to this project. Got to reel in some of the, we gave money to Historic Society out of this and a couple others. So I'm just, Angela and I are working tomorrow on how much money is left over. And then we'll start digging into the, the second round. We had five or six applications here who are just trying to work through approval and that'll impact the amount of money here. So I think overall, this is, this has been going well. It's getting, you know, money directly to people. I would say the choke point that we're seeing now with this just is, this is heating work predominantly, some electrical, critical work, but mostly heating. So two to three contractors generally are what's available right now doing the work. So it's just a matter of each of them getting to the next project, the next project. So we've got a lot of projects approved, just awaiting the contract work to get them done.
Is there a number of people we've actually helped, or we will have helped?
But some of them were only like twenty-three hundred bucks.
Yeah, most of these projects didn't rise anywhere in that. Yeah, so right now.
This has been going for five months.
Yeah, so we've got, let's say, twenty-eight or twenty-nine applications in here divided by that will give you the, the average, you know, what this project's been costing. So right now, let's say we've got about twenty-eight homes that's been, have been impacted.
I just pulled up the sheet.
We, and again, just for, you know, yes, the, the project's been in motion for five months, but no, no grant process like this ever happens overnight. I mean, we had four hundred and forty-some odd applications to call through, divide them into three income groups. We're doing due diligence, you know, on everybody's documents to make sure that, that the income levels that are being reported are accurate. That, that sometimes we get the information right the first time, sometime we don't. We haven't been, we haven't been unduly harsh on the deadline. That's, that's part of it. And then again, you know, people getting estimates, firming things up. It's, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that have impacted the, the time here. Again, the execution will seem slow on this number of projects approved to the number of funded, which will have nothing to do with us. It'll just have to do with how quickly contractors are completing projects.
So the spreadsheet you sent on August twentieth, will you send that out updated based on these numbers then? Thank you.
It's good program that we put together for the city and making a difference. A lot of people would be in real trouble because of all furnaces this winter, the price of gas.
One of the things I just want to touch on here, because I might forget when we come to, in part of Andrew's discussion about grants tonight, you know, we're always talking about CDVG for, for homes, home improvement programs. So one of the things that's happening here is we're getting, we hope, a really good data set of where people are looking for projects. So we're able to enter that data into neighborhoods because as of the moment, we haven't gotten the new community calculations that we need from the 2020 census to know if the city qualifies for CDVG as a city. So until that happens, we have to, we have to do it by neighborhood and then do the neighborhood income studies. So we're currently doing one now for a project. It's going like we thought it would go, very difficult, very slow. We've got to have ninety percent respondents. That's pretty high. And this is a small neighborhood we're in now. So anyway, but I think something will come from this hopefully, is we can enter this, this data in and we'll see where the need is. If we can pinpoint a neighborhood or neighborhoods, that'll tell us if we've got to do income studies to be able to apply for those kind of programs where, where we can go. And Andrew will talk a little bit more about her grants and what her philosophy is on that. But so, you know, we're not going to be able to, to satisfy all the need that was sent in, but we're not going to lose the data to be able to find the next program to, to move that forward. Just an update on the sales tax. I know we had some email and discussion. I just want to assure council the, I'm, I'm not really sure what, what legislator Kern was, was talking about, where she was talking about it. But this is, there's a, there'll be a constant surveillance program going on with the sales tax between us and the state and the county. If you think right now, nobody reports sales tax anywhere in the county but to the county. So it's not like we have to look and see is someone reporting here, not there, not here. It all goes to the county. The only difference now is some people have to be peeled off to, to come to Augdensburg. So, so being able to investigate and determine is, has Walmart done the break off is not, it's not a hard check for the state. We'll, we'll double down on that. I, I find that difficult to believe that it hasn't already been corrected. We may not see it catch up. Again, until, as Angela's explained, there's the true ups, you know, everything's based on an algorithm. We don't have a lot of data in right now, so it's an even greater estimate curve, which is what caused us to have that real low month because they've been overpaying us. But again, if, if you, if you understand the way this works now, everyone's reporting to the county. So all we have to do is figure out who should be reporting to, in, in here or not. And the big box stores, obviously those are, those are easier because we know, we know them. So I would say that's level one. Then level two is looking at kind of the other known businesses that have multiple locations. For instance, Drexel is only ever reported to St. Lawrence County. There is one store in Augdensburg that has to peel off and report to here. So tho- those sort of checks are, are kind of easy ones for us to test the system to see, to see if it's working. But the state's fully on top of this. I, again, I, I feel like it's, it's going to take us, it's going to take us two full cycles is what council should be prepared for. It's really going to be two full cycles between the catching up to see what your money is and your reporting time versus getting everybody in line. And then, you know, we're a small taxing, sales taxing jurisdiction. So the third part of the compliance is going to have to be, you know, looking and determining those, those businesses that may reside in the city that aren't paying sales tax at all. So that becomes a little more of the, of the, of the sales tax marshal. And we may get a little bit of help during the, the large assessment project going on where assessors are, are eyes on and we can identify, here's a business that's reporting sales tax properly. So there's a, there's, there's three levels of, of surveillance that will go on with this. And I, I, again, I, I feel like we're well positioned. It's not that, that difficult necessarily. Look, the big box stores again are the, I would say are the, not necessarily simple, but we know now, they report everything to the county. They've got to be able to pull off their, their answer. They don't have a choice. They can't say we're not doing that. We're only reporting to one thing. So if in fact, for instance, a large big box store is not complying, you know, they'll get noticed from the state that they, that they have to comply. So, but we'll, we'll get a report back on that. So I think Angela and I probably owe at least an initial report on, on the large corporate enterprises that we can. There, there is a very, very strict, I think Angela may have laid this out in an email to you, there's a very strict parameter placed on us by the comptroller's office about sharing this information. In fact, we were led to believe that once we were a taxing entity, a jurisdiction, that the information was ours. And, and it can be ours, but, but the, our ability to share it outside of who receives it, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of restrictions put on this. So there, there'll be some encrypted talk going on and Angela's trying to define, in fact, she saw her own legal counsel on this, as well as the city council to determine what, and the comptroller's office is not, I don't think they're giving us bad information. But it's, it's a very restrictive process because you're, you're dealing with private entities, you know, business and their, and their numbers. So we're not, we're not slow on this, but we are, we, any data we ask for has to come through an enormous bureaucracy with a, with a giant confidentiality tag on it that, so they give it to Angela. You know, we've had to go so far as to say can she even share it specifically with me without generality? So we can input things into the system to her, but the reporting back is, is right now is a little more, more difficult than we hoped for. Obviously, it's not, it's not optional though. No, no store, no, nobody in Augdensburg has the option to not, not do it. So it's not, not as if we have to go battle someone to do it. We identify, the state identifies that they will, they will.
Did we get last year's monthly totals on sales tax collections, just so we understand how it came in last year every month?
Sure.
That some, you probably have that somewhere already. You've got to generate it. And I would assume that the last quarter it increases because it's, you know, the holiday seasons.
I think you can make an assumption of that regard. I think this year, we just want to be careful on, on projecting much of any month. Because again, I think as, as Angela's explained a couple of times, this, it's, it, there's, it's an algorithm that, that only gets better and more accurate as you have data to report. It isn't an estimate of what you made that month. It's an estimate based on overtime. So our danger this year, and we already saw it, was they estimated us high when we had a true-up. We were much lower. So, you know, we almost had to pay money. We were pennies. We got the one-month reporting. So that's why I say about a whole cycle. I, I can give you whatever data set you're looking for. The only thing I would, I would caution all of you, I feel like the last meeting, we were trying to decipher what month it came from. Just know, nothing has changed with how we. Just know, nothing has changed with how we tell you. This is the money we receive in this month. Forget where it came from. This is the money we receive this month. This, this is the money you have to work with for this month, this month, this month, and this month. It's always been on a scale where the month, money you got in July may have been part April, part May, a little bit of June, you know, depending on what it was, et cetera. So I think what's, what's most important for councils, whatever we get monthly is what we're, what we're living off for, for that month. Trying to, right now, trying to project it is just, it's just really difficult. But I think, Council Rees, you could certainly make the assumption, we've seen it. School season goes up, so people's buying goes up, preparing for that. The holiday season spending goes up. The one thing I think, if you look at our numbers, what you should know is, overall in the county, the county's sales tax numbers generally are up this year. So ours aren't necessarily in a downward trend, it's just that, right now, is our percentage of that coming out. It isn't that the county's numbers have dropped, so we're, their county actually is up. So our numbers are, you know, once they're, they're in there, they're reflected, and it'll be in theory, an up year, not necessarily a down. It's, it looks down to us, because we're, we're getting less. But overall, the, the gross sales countywide, I think you've seen it reported in the media a couple of times, were up.
What, what's the time, just a, an idea as to the timeframe of the two cycles for reporting? I mean, what are we looking at here? How far out?
We had through, I believe, was July.
Right. So we'd have an idea by February?
Yeah.
Roughly? Right. This is more for the public than? Right, okay.
That first quarter's really buoying us, because we were on the county, county plan still, and, and their numbers were up. So that first quarter number really has us, that, that inflated our numbers a little more than we should expect overall.
That's going to understand why it was 85,000 in January? When it was 360 in February, 310 in March, 370 in April? Why is it 85,000 in January? And on your handout, your graph, I think, the month of January was way down, like $85,000. Whereas these months here, while we were collecting from the county, we're like averaging around 350,000. This doesn't make any sense to me. Yeah, I didn't know that if you, you know, did you, did you take?
Some that had gone through December, December, maybe.
Did you, when you, when you finalized the books, did you, you know, move some of that into last year? So is that a true number, or is that a?
We would have done some of that, Council Rees, only because that would have been what we received before the December, yeah, right. Looking at what, um, what period it uncovered, whatever, whatever. Most likely, some of that could have been included. Because when you receive money in January, it's not for the month of January. So when we prepare that schedule, we think of half days of study. But the policy is required us to be reported on a full basis, while we're being.
Yeah, so money we got in February was really for January. So I mean, they, they should balance out, you know? It just, it just stands out. We're going to estimate for this year, we need to understand that.
Okay, just a couple of quick things. The property tax foreclosure, nothing, nothing new on that. We, we delivered, we delivered the last check on the outstanding money that we owed. I think we've heard that already, and we've, we've sent the bill for the 2021 delinquent city taxes. Sometime in around the end of October, middle of October, we will send over the delinquent 2022 city taxes. And we're around 435,000 we sent over in 2021 delinquents. Our 2022 delinquents would stand right now in the 800,000 range. So we'll see. I'm not 100% convinced the county will act on this right away, but we'll, we presented, you know, we think is the money owed to the city, and we will, we will wait a response from the county treasurer. Andrea, I'll let you talk about the dismantling of the personal items and ready.
So, yeah, number five and six on your agenda sort of go together. Based on the award of the Ready Project by council to TJ Fiacca, we are moving forward with the contract process for that project. We're having our first team meeting tomorrow in anticipation of the contractor's schedule, which we will address tomorrow. We wanted to give the public the greatest notice about the park closure. So on August 31st, we did a press release announcing that, beginning October 1st, which is a Saturday, the park, the entire Greenbelt Park area, which is roughly from the Customs House to Caroline Street and to Riverside Avenue, will be closed to the public until further notice. The contract allows for various milestones for things like the playground completion, the tennis courts, and the marina work. But in general terms, there is a 365 days, so one calendar year from the notice to proceed, which has not yet been issued. So we don't want to get ahead of ourselves and say it's going to be closed until July 1 and then not meet that, so, until further notice. But hopefully, this won't take a full year, and we'll be able to open, open in the summer of next year. So also to follow up on council's request about personalized items, specifically the fence posts at Kids Kingdom. We included in that press release that we will be working with the public on Friday and Saturday of this week. If you come to the park between 3:00 and 5:00 on Friday, or between 9:00 and noon on Saturday, you must know where your fence post is. So take time to identify it before, and staff will be available to remove it for you, and then you can take it from then. We are asking that nobody remove your own fence post. That would be a violation of our insurance policy, so please don't do that. Our staff will be available with the appropriate tools to remove it for you. We just ask that you identify it. We won't have enough staff to walk around and, and help you identify it. So we've had a few calls to the Recreation Director for people that may or may not be able to make those two dates, and we're making accommodations for that. But largely, we've gotten good feedback that people will be available at those two times. So we're looking forward to working with the public on that particular side of things. Also, just a little bit of confusion, that people thought the park was being closed immediately. It's not being closed until October 1st. It is open right now. Hopefully, many of you enjoyed the Tall Ship event that happened over the weekend. Obviously, our park is, is open, and, and it will remain so, along with the marina, until the intended closure date of October 1st.
Yeah, I just heard.
Just one, I'm sorry.
Um, I just didn't know, at our last meeting, the chief of police said that he was having a meeting with several different entities regarding the homeless situation. I didn't know if there was any update on that possibly.
So that, that particular meeting was at the BHU building on Park Street. They are having some turnover in their management down there, so that not a lot was accomplished. We're meeting again at the end of this month, and I believe, Andrea, we have a meeting with another group, Bisbee Center, this. Yeah, so, yeah, we got two groups. Both, we'll have meetings with both this month.
Okay, thank you.
And it's my goal to make these two groups into one group.
Awesome. I've seen a lot of people asking about that. And my other one is, are we still going to maintain City Hall being closed to the public on Friday? Or is that something we can look at opening back up again?
No, not until we've got, we've got staffing right now. We're, we're, the comptroller's office is severely understaffed and everywhere. We don't, it's, it's working out well right now. It's giving us some, some staff time to be able to, to work through, through topics. But I don't, until we see some, some staff changes, I don't, I don't see us changing that posture.
That was my, that was my old business. And one, we, you passed the resolution with the county to do the feasibility study tonight. Back May 9th, you did the same thing, requesting that the St. Lawrence County Administrator participate in a feasibility study on the health insurance. Seeing that we're going to kick up possibly our employees to 21%, a $4,000 increase in their health insurance for two people, 6,000 for family. Did it go anywhere? Did they participate, or did they just do like us and send the resolution?
No, we, we will complete the information that we'll need to send along to them for consideration. The, the plan right now is to move forward and get the best rate we can on the current plan. But starting next week, we're meeting with our current consultant, another consultant by way of competition, and we'll be engaging the county kind of as the third prong, if you will, for investigating and determining the most efficient way for health insurance to move forward in the year 2024. I'm, we're hoping to start all that, that communication now, so it can be finalized by the spring of 2023. So we've got several months to be able to work with the bargaining units and all employees on any changes that have to be made. We, we will be making some sort of change to the healthcare plan and map out in 2024 from, from what we're on now. So we'll, once we can provide the county, along with the consultants, all the applicable information, it's a pretty extensive data set they need to do the analysis, then they'll, they'll get the request before the month's over, probably they'll have. I don't, I don't know that until I send the information. I don't, I don't know that they'll, that they'll agree to do it or not. We'll, we'll see. I'll send over the request, along with all the information that they would need to provide, their consultant to do a, to do an assessment of the impact and what the charges and costs would be. And then for us to determine again, what is the level of service that their employees get versus what we are currently providing? Again, we, you know, as you all know, we have, we have three, five union contracts that are solidified for a significant amount of time. So making changes to those is going to have to be precipitated by some sort of significant necessity, and obviously doing all we can do to maintain the benefit levels, copays, et cetera, that are currently engaged in there now.
So basically, it's been six months, and nobody's called back, so participation is zero.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I don't want to put on them, Council Fisher, the, the data set that we have to put together to be able to compete this law, whether it's to send to the county and say, first of all, tell us, would you, would you do it? And second of all, what it cost us is, is really upon us to, to be able to compile that data. And it need to be based on about six months of, of recent data, which, which we have.
One last one. The streets. It's, it's almost like a patch city. If you drive around, there's Franklin Street's really horrible. I mean, I realize that they just did the project, but it's been now three weeks to a month, and they just left binder down about an inch, maybe an inch and a half through the whole blocks. Kids walking the school, block and street. When is that getting taken care of? Or are we done paving for the year? And we're just going to, like, we were a tree city, and now we're basically a patch. And we'll spend one month.
They started putting it up flush, and they left it down an inch. They do have to go back through and top it. We just got to meet with them. Me and Joe rode the streets the other day, so we just had some disagreements with what we think they should be doing and what they are doing for the Hewleton project. And the, the guys now are just out-patching the large areas in the city. My crew is to get through the winter.
Now, I'm glad you did that, because there's a bad spot that I kept hitting on location, so.
So we're doing, you're doing, the city's doing Franklin Street on the top?
No, they are doing it, but we have to agree to what they're doing. It's part of the, I just don't want them to do what they're, I don't think they're doing enough. I think some areas they missed, and I don't like the way they saw cut it. They used the big wheel instead of a small wheel to make it nice.
But in the end, we'll, we'll repave all.
In the end, yeah, Franklin Street's going to need to be repaved again from one end to the other.
It just seems when you leave the pavement out, you know, across the, the hole.
Yep.
When the flowers goodbye the first time, the second time, third time.
It just, they're gone.
Every, this, this year, I, I just got a feeling it's going to be a nightmare.
There's just no other way to get that much done in a year. We don't have the manpower to, or the money to pay that many streets in a year.
We should ask Hewleton to pay half of the cost of paving the entire Franklin Street, because it's their project that resulted in the need to repave. So I think that request should be made.
And we burn up all our chips money, or all, all the money for the streets and stuff already? There's no more paving?
There's no, we don't have the, the time to pave anymore, nor, nor the manpower. Though we did 20-some blocks earlier in the year, then we had to switch back to do the road cuts and the patchwork. There'll be some leftover money and chips, but that's where the sweeper money's coming out of, and there'll probably be maybe $25,000 to $50,000 left after that.
And this brings us to new business, and we will begin with City Hall here, David Jolly.
So we have a request to broadcast or amplify for stereo system competition on September 17th, 2020, and September 18th, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Police Chief and I both signed up on it, just requires council's consent. This is similar to what we did last year, to ensure that it wasn't going to infringe on church and memorial services, et cetera.
We just need to.
I just need to consent on it.
I'm fine with it.
That's fine.
Yep. I had one item for new business. I know I've been thinking about our problem, you know, switching over to the, you know, we no longer had the agreement with the county, and we switched over to collecting our own sales tax, and now it looks like we're going to be down 1.5, $2 million. And, you know, it results in being faced with, you know, increasing taxes or finding new revenue. So I got thinking about it, and I put this in a resolution form, and it's the, it's the best way to explain it. Don't be just carrying that. Certainly isn't a solution, but I think we need to ask, and if we don't ask, we don't receive, so. So it's a resolution request from the state of New York to begin making payments and new taxes, pilot payments in the city of Augsburg, given the state's vast, underutilized and blighted tax-exempt land holdings in the city of Augsburg. And whereas over 60% of the value of real estate in the city of Augsburg is exempt from taxation, and whereas the single largest tax-exempt landholder in the city of Augsburg is the state of New York, and whereas the state of New York owns 30%, you know, I, I thought it was 25%, but I did the math and everything. And it's 30% of the entire landmass that makes up the city of Augsburg is owned by the state of New York. And whereas the assessed value of these holdings is over $200 million, and whereas the state of New York owns 50%, I did that calculation too, and I was shocked that they own 50% of all the waterfront in Augsburg, and we wonder why we have problems and we can't fund police and fire, and we can't, you know, increase our tax base. You, you can't do any development, it's owned by the state. And whereas these tax exemptions severely hamper the city's ability to provide governmental services, including public safety, without exceeding its constitutional taxing limit, or raising local real property taxes in a city that already has the highest combined tax rate in the North Country, and one of the highest combined tax rates in the entire state of New York. I, I've verified that in the past. And whereas these exemptions exceed $8.2 million in lost revenue to the city, county, and school district, and multi-millions of more dollars in lost revenue each year due to their underutilized, blighted, and deteriorated conditions, and the fact that they comprise over 50% of the city's valuable. And the fact that they comprise over fifty percent of the city's valuable St. Lawrence River waterfront, hampering future private sector growth and development. And whereas the state of New York makes payment in lieu of taxes or pilot payments to other cities in the state in recognition of their tax exempt status, including Albany, New York, which receives over twenty-two million dollars annually in pilot payments from the state of New York for one of the state's campuses in Albany, that employs thousands of people that make very generous, uh, annual salaries. I mean, they're state jobs. And, you know, the psych center and the prisons, you know, you, you were talking over three thousand employees at one time. You know, times have changed. I mean, what's, what's the benefit now when they disclosed Arginsburg and, you know, downsized, uh, you know, the psych center from like three thousand employees down to, I, I don't know what they have, a hundred or so? So now therefore be it further resolved that the Arginsburg City Council respectfully requests its New York State Senator and New York State Assemblyman to introduce legislation to gain approval and funding for pilot payments from the state of New York to the city of Arginsburg. And be it further resolved that these pilot payments be earmarked for public safety and other governmental functions in the city of Arginsburg, services which are presently provided free to the state of New York at local taxpayers' expense. I mean, there was a fire at the port last year. Who, who answered? The taxpayers did. Every time there's, uh, an incident at the psych center, it's the city police that go. If there's a fire in a building down there, it's, so we're subsidizing the state of New York. Um, and be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent via certified mail to Governor Kathy Hochul, State Senator Patty Ritchie, Assemblyman Mark Walzick, New York State Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins, New York State Assembly Speaker Carl Hestie, State Captroller Thomas Donapoli, and, you know, the New York State Prison Redevelopment Commission. I mean, in their discussions when they're talking about doing something with the prison that they just closed and all the revenue we lost from water and sewer, the jobs we lost, the payrolls we lost. Um, you know, they ought to be thinking in a, in bigger picture, not just about that, but about all their land holdings and making recommendations on that, which could include pilot payments. So I would, uh, I'd like to introduce that and I'd, I'd move that.
I'll second it, get some discussion going here. You know, uh, I've mentioned a couple of times already, probably within the past year, so there was similar legislation. Uh, I'm thinking it was Senator Joe Griffo tried to introduce it. I don't think it even got out of committee, uh, where a certain percentage of, uh, the property was off the tax rules. And I think it was because the city of Rome, which is in his district, it was very similar to the situation Arginsburg's in. And, uh, never got anywhere, unfortunately, but, uh, and your resolution here indicates that there are some cities that do get pilot payments, so.
Yeah, I know that the state makes other pilot payments on like environmental, um, you know, forests that they own and things like that. I, I haven't delved into it that deeply, but I think we'd be surprised at pilot payments. So, I mean, how is that a, a fair way to, you know, treat one community versus another community? And, and there's such a stark difference between Albany that has all those state jobs and, and salaries and employees and citizens and, you know, and, and us that has the, you know, blighted buildings that are an eyesore that you can't do anything with. You can't develop it. No one can build a home on the river over there. Uh, there's no, there's just no opportunity. And this is, this is the problem that we faced and the previous councils have faced for years. So I think we need to make the request and, and, uh, you know, let, let the senator, whoever the senator may be in the assemblymen, whether Walzick or Duffy or Gray, whoever gets elected this fall. I mean, they're all out there talking what a great job they're doing. Um, you know, let them carry the ball on this and let's see if they can get a bill pass for us.
You know, that was always the trade-off, right? This, this, the hospital was a psychiatric center and the city had a lot of jobs and people were making money and investing in their housing stock and things like that and, uh, along with the businesses. But, yeah, it's, uh.
It's gone the other way.
It's gone the other way. And now they just took another prison from us. And even though we, the, Thomas Donapoli just gave a report on, uh, the state of mental health in New York has exasperated tremendously. And we have a campus right here that they're, they're turning the heat off. You know, just to have more blight and dilapidated buildings, they have no intentions.
Yeah.
I don't see it anyways.
Yeah, it's very least, you know, it raises the issue and maybe it'll expedite some of the things that Steve and staff are working on with the land holdings down there and that as well, so.
Psychiatric center right here for the country and not only New York State. There's, there's beds, I think the county alone has, uh, a waiting list eighty-five for eighty-five beds right now to the psych center. And if our county has that, what about all the other agencies within the county and the other counties around us? I mean, it's the only psychiatric center north of ninety, I believe. So if they're, they're taking the jobs and, and they're leaving us empty-handed on taxes.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see our state legislatures put something together here, kinda like, uh, Griffo, I believe it was, had before.
I don't see much hope if they won't even consider leaving the heat on it for a year.
Yeah.
You know, that's, you write resolutions and where they're gonna go. I mean, small thing like leaving the heat.
But it might bring attention to it.
Well, I think the, the perspective, potentially the pilot aspect. I mean, did we put forth a pilot concept in some manner? You know, whether it be of, of the fifty percent of the waterfront that might be, be developed along with, yeah. I, of course, couldn't correlate it with the DRI. But when you look at it, you know, from a pilot program, and, and they are all about pilot programs. And I know about the taxes in Albany, the taxes in all, in the very city of Albany, uh, which there's many, you know, there's, there's, uh, Gilderland and all these other communities, their tax base is nothing like the city of, uh, the city of Albany. And it's, it's kind of a good correlation here. I love the concept. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know if this is something that we possibly put forward as a, as a pilot concept to, to get a foot in the door. Um, I think OMH should be added to the bottom as well. Uh, you know, with this New York State Prison Redevelopment Commission, maybe even docs and OMH as a whole. Um, you know, it's, uh, you know, when, when there's money to be out there to be had and we can come up with a concept of some sort to maybe get the ball rolling and then, you know, and to, to Mike's comment as well. I mean, you know, turning the heat off and dealing with the bureaucracy in Albany is, is, is a hell of a lot different than just throwing a resolution out there. But I, I, I love the concept. I like the idea.
I'd like to see.
You know, when you have other municipalities out there and, you know, I'm, nothing against Joe Griffo. He's a good friend of mine, but he's on the wrong aisle. He's in the wrong aisle. You know, and you're gonna have to get sponsors on the Democratic aisle to get these through.
Yep.
Uh, to get this legislation passed and, and that's just the way it's done. And this isn't a slight to Senator Ritchie or anybody in the Republican line. You know, it's not, but it's just the way nature, or it's just the way business is done. And, and, uh, I, I like the concept.
It'd be nice to add, uh.
Maybe just do a quick proofread here and I, I just see one spelling mistake. But, you know, if we're gonna put it forward, uh, you know, just let's make the proper modifications.
I'd like to add, um, the New York State Police and Fire unions. I mean, they have clout.
Yeah, I'm happy to lobby on behalf of that.
Yeah. So what would you like to do? I'm, I'm personally comfortable taking a vote tonight. I'd like to actually. Can I, can I make an amendment, uh, just, just a little bit of housekeeping in it? In the opening summary statement, just fast, take the EO, you know, um, I, do we have, you know, I mean, I love the concept. Do we, do we have a discussion about some kind of pilot aspect, some kind of project, uh? You know, I mean. No, short of, short of billing them, they have to agree to make payments to you. So you can't, because they're.
I'm not talking about billing. I'm talking about showing up with a concept.
Yeah, this is it. I mean, this is, we're making the request.
I'm, I'm being more advanced as far as the pilot, you know, uh, uh, you know, something, you know, uh, uh, you know, what, what, what did, um, Newburgh do to get their monies in their pilot program or, or the city of Albany? You know, they, they just created more state jobs, you know, ultimately at the end of the day, but.
I, I don't think it would take us long, uh, Councilor Reese, if you wanted to, if you wanted to wait till the next meeting, we can format this differently and we can put together a, at least a rough data set to go with it. I mean, we did, if you recall in the financial presentation, we showed council if, if the, uh, if the current property that Councilor Reese mentions in here, if we were getting hundred percent, fifty percent or just twenty-five percent of that, what it would do to our tax rate. I think we can, we can quickly assimilate some data here, uh, that, that demonstrates, you know, how, at the end of the day, we're trying to run a city on, uh, I mean, let's just call it about fifty percent of the revenue we ought to be generating if, if the property was being utilized effectively. And if you cut that in half, just twenty-five percent. So I, I think, I think you can also show the impact, uh, you know, this year's budget will be a, a good example of, of where again our costs are escalating and it isn't so much that the, the costs are rising at a rate that's unexpected that you try to keep up with, it's that our, our revenue, uh, isn't. And, and police services are one that you can, you can use an example. Again, there's a good amount of resources that gets plugged into state operations, state facilities that the local taxpayers put the, put the bill on. So I, I think we could put together at least a, uh, a conceptual data set that could be presented. I, I think the only thing I, I say about this is I don't, all the agencies will be fine, but at the end of the day, this is a political, this is a political movement. You, you've gotta get anybody and everybody you can to sign onto this. We're certainly an extreme example, I, I would, I guess, but, but Albany's, it's classic though. Since it's in the backyard of that, it's kinda like Washington DC, certainly they're, they're taking care of them. But, but what's going on here is to give again, again, I, we've got data we can put together quickly to be able to, to support this. We can properly format the resolution and, and get it, get it ready for approval and.
Just keep in mind, we also have an election coming up for the.
Well, we do, and I, I think it's something, you know, it depends on, do you all wanna push? I mean, there is, you know, there is a race out there for, for the Assembly District at least and who's, who's willing to, to, to run head on to this, to this deal here? And who's, who's, who's got the clout and the ability to, to be able to garner support on both sides of the aisle? Where power in the political spectrum isn't gonna change anytime soon. We're gonna have to deal with it the way it is. So who's, who's running right now that, you know, do we think has the best ability perhaps or pitched this to both of them? Are you gonna support this?
You know, foresee, I mean, you're not gonna see a change in the House of Legislature through the Senate or the Assembly. But there's a, a, an opportunity, you know, there's possibility of, of a change in, at the executive level. You know, so, and, and that's gonna carry weight as well.
Yep.
So I assume there's a consensus to, to move forward and, uh.
Yes, I'm good.
We'll, we'll get it done for the next meeting. It'll be ready to go.
So I, I will give you, um, the list of the, the properties that comes up to thirty percent. And I'll give you the, the map of the waterfront, which I'm sure Andrea could do a better job at.
Yep.
And vast is spelled wrong, I apologize.
Mayor, if I may, we do have a motion and a second. I didn't, I wasn't sure if Councilor Reese cared. You're gonna make a motion to table it?
Yes.
I think Councilor Reese can rescind it, correct?
You, you could withdraw your motion or it could be tabled.
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion so we can get it on the next agenda.
Thank you, sir.
And this brings us to items for discussion.
Good evening again. Uh, so we've talked a lot about grants throughout the summer and even this evening. The DRI application is coming due quite quickly. Uh, we did submit our letter of intent. This is round six. The applications are due later this month, in fact, on September twenty-third. In front of you, I did provide everybody as well as members of the public with the map of the area that was submitted in the twenty twenty-one application submitted by the city. Um, so tonight in conversations with the city manager, uh, we really need to have a conversation with council to gauge your interest, um, in whether or not we will go forward with a submission in this year's round of applications. I just wanted to take a minute, um, at the outset of this conversation to recap the applications that we have outstanding with New York State. Uh, we currently have, uh, four applications that were submitted through the July twenty-ninth deadline for CFA applications. In total, those four applications, um, are a grant request of four point two million dollars for a total project, um, or projects totaling five point eight million dollars. We just submitted a drinking water state revolving loan application to conduct the lead service line replacement inventory that Shane mentioned in his presentation. We don't have the parameters of what that, what funding will be that may support that project. Um, but the project is estimated to cost, uh, just under two point seven million dollars. And that is a study that the city has to complete between now and, uh, October of twenty twenty-four. Tonight, uh, the council approved the submission of a Restore New York grant. Um, that the beneficiary of that is the city in, in a lot of ways, but, um, it is for property that is not presently owned by the city, being at twelve twenty-three Pickering Street. And that request for funding right now looks like a request of, uh, just over a million from the state for a total request of one point two million. So all of those grants, those are all New York State grants, uh, total eight million thirty-five thousand dollars. Most of those grants will be announced at the same time or around the same time that the DRI application will be announced. Uh, two of the four CFA applications are for dealing with our stormwater combined storm sewer issue here. Um, one is for Parks Pavilion to be incorporated into the Ready Project Greenbelt Park area. And the last is funding to support, uh, the Main Street Pump Station, which we also talked about this evening, which would reduce our contribution from the six seventy-five or six eighty-five that Angela mentioned to eight, eighty-five thousand dollars. So it would be significant. Um, the DRI is a ten million dollar application request. There's no in-between. Um, and it requires that you have significant community and political support for a concentrated downtown area. Um, the area that you see in front of you on the map is roughly the same area that we have applied for in the five rounds previous with, with minor additions and deletions. Um, we do not receive a debriefing on what we did well in our application or where we can improve our application. That is not an option for applicants through the DRI process. So I really don't know where, uh, our strengths and weaknesses are in our particular applications that were submitted in the past. Other than to look at applications that have been funded, all of which largely have projects that are truly shovel-ready projects and have advanced very quickly, uh, following the award of, of DRI funding. In our application, we submitted eleven projects that, um, in our last application, excuse me, we submitted eleven projects that included everything from solely municipal projects like the regional recreational facility and improvements to the downtown mall parking area to private projects like the brewery on seventeen Main Street and, uh, an entertainment venue, uh, adjacent to the Shade Roller Factory. In reviewing those eleven projects, none of them have really moved forward. Um, the brewery is the closest and, but they have not yet broken ground primarily due to lack of contractors or contractors just being too busy, so their project has been delayed. Um, we have advanced work at the cheese plant, but not to the extent that there's even wide community support for a regional recreational facility. And doing something like that, that is a municipally sponsored project eliminates funding for like Restore New York um, from even being acceptable grant projects. So ultimately, uh, we can retool the application and update it and resubmit in compliance with the deadline.
Yes.
But we need to hear from council, um, and we need to hear tonight. But we need to hear from council, um, and we need to hear tonight whether you're in agreement with this particular boundary or whether that boundary should be, uh, changed in any way so that we can comply with the requirement for public, um, public feedback in order to get this submitted on time.
If there isn't anything proposed for development on the Augsberry Tank Farm property, I, I take that off unless there's some benefit that I don't know of. But if there isn't a project there, it, it would make it more concentrated. Likewise, um, if, uh, you know, is there a project that Diamond, I guess we don't know yet, but, uh, maybe this grant application will help them out with that, but if they aren't gonna participate, then, then that would make it more concentrated if that wasn't included, if there isn't a project that's shovel-ready and ready to go. And I don't think that the recreation stuff did very well. I forget if Steve told me that, that there wasn't any revenue associated with it. So I mean, maybe that doesn't get included this time and it's just private, you know, whatever. You gotta have a private project, so, but we have to advertise and do something with it, so.
Well, we had a lot of projects, right? I think, I think they did hold off the next, I think these projects would be moving forward. Now, they're totally downtown.
Well, that, the purpose of the grant is to, to provide the money to help them to move forward too, isn't it?
I, I don't, what, what do you present to them to fund? Everything kind of went away and, uh, or is on hold. I think, I think we on track with these projects come next year.
I'd, I'd hate to miss a, a, a round of funding. Got it. You gotta put the grant application in.
You gotta put it in.
Yep, so.
This year kind of.
Well, that's why we hold a public hearing and see what level of interest there is, right? And get people, get people stimulated and interested so we have a good grant application.
It's literally like eleven days away.
If you want to have a public hearing, you certainly can, but you will need to call for a special meeting to have that. The deadline is September twenty-third.
So the plan was not to do anything this year and we're just getting this now?
Certainly didn't say that. This was, this has been on, the council's been updated about this several times. Uh, the letter of intent was submitted. This is, this is the last opportunity for feedback from council to give direction to staff.
Yeah, I've, I've always done in favor. I just assumed we were doing it. That's what we were, we were told we were doing it. So that's what I've been waiting for.
I, I, I think all we're trying to, to parlay now is if you, if you look at the application we submitted last year. For our feedback was, our application was, was favorable, but obviously we, we didn't get funded. So I think Andrew and I are just trying to analyze what, when we make the presentation this year, what, what's gotten better? The, the answer is nothing. In fact, we've sort of backslid on some things, not, not going away, just. I just don't see where we're that competitive. All, all of our keynote projects, our private projects are not, are not at a, at a place yet where I think.
I'm sure everybody that participated last year would, would have participated this year had, had they been, you know.
Yeah, I, I think the only thing we're trying to parlay here is you have a finite number of people doing the same thing. Andrew just rattled off all the grants that we're working on now. We're trying to work on those vehemently. Nobody didn't work on this, but there's lots of things. We're trying to run the city predominantly on grants. We're just trying to parlay to council to put our effort where we think our best chance is for funding. And we're just telling you now, we don't think our, our effort is gonna be, is gonna gain any fruit. Just putting in for it, the kind of the put your hand in every bucket and hope you grab something philosophy isn't, is not gonna award, award grants.
You know, I don't, I don't agree with your thinking on that. You have to be more positive than that. Well, how many rounds have there been? Have there been ten million? Four, five?
There have been five. This is round six.
Okay, so there's, we didn't get it the last five times. Did we apply the last five times?
We did not apply in round one.
Okay, so, but we have, uh, four rest of them.
Correct.
Okay, keep going. I mean.
So are the private, you're not saying? Are the private agencies still willing to throw their name on it and everything that they've done?
I mean, from the conversations we've had with them that are not specific about D R I, I mean, I think that they are. I don't think that their projects have changed substantially. And to, to Steve's point, um, I mean, our sort of key projects, uh, which is, which is the Diamond site is, uh, hasn't really moved forward, which is no fault of the cities. We, we went through the process. Um, the developer got cold feet, the market information he got, his, the scale of his project was too large. So we're, we're still in conversations with the second party on that who, I guess that's, we're still in conversation. So that, that project is, is actually, I would say further behind than we were when we applied last year.
Did we have it up on, uh, did we have it pushed up to Ford Street last year or the year before?
The map in front of you is exactly what we submitted for last year, which is a little larger than what was submitted for the year before.
I mean, it would, you know, we've got a couple of businesses open up on Ford Street. You know, we've got Wimpy Sis back and, and you got, uh, well, it's not, it's not new, the tattoo shop, but, uh, I think we may have even lost one. I don't know if Ford Street would, uh, you know, and, and I'm just kind of spitballing here, you know, I'm just looking at it from that perspective, going down past the, uh, really past here.
Could we bring it in from the Augsberry Tank Farm, bring that in, bring it in, uh? Hello?
I'm fine.
I, I don't see why we would, we would get rid of the Augsberry Tank.
Because there isn't, there isn't a project that's, that's ready to go. There's, there's no developer. You gotta, you have to have a developer in a project and, and you're supposed to have it in a concentrated downtown area. They don't, they don't like it sprawl all over the place.
And there's nothing significant there, right?
We went downtown in Marina District.
The problem is, I think if we had funding for those areas and you had an investor, I mean, that's deep water. That's good water there. You know, we're a river community.
Yep.
You know, at the end of the day, you know, I mean, you know, if, if we're successful, I think that's advantageous for us, you know, um.
It is, it's just not ready yet.
It, it, it isn't, but, you know, that money can help.
So just as an example, if, if the hotel project that we briefed last year were, 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 were anywhere different than where it was last year, um, I think, uh, that in consideration with the brewery project, it was one of our brief projects that has gone forward. Had we been tearing down the cheese plant, I think we would have come up quickly with a recommendation to do just that. Condense right down to that Oswegochi waterfront downtown area. Focus around the projects that are in motion. This is acceleration money, not seed money and, and get it going. But we, we didn't have that either. I think that, that's what we're trying to say is we, we looked at this. If we took out the Augsberry property, that's sort of a no-brainer right now. No movement on it. We're again, we, we were hoping in conjunction with the state to be a little bit farther. We're, we're moving now, but it's been, it's been nothing sort of this, the normal process with the state, what we thought would be five or six months is gonna be eighteen months. It seems like to get, uh, the state cleanup fund authorized to get down there and get working and then start dealing with the adjacent property owners. So I think we really felt strong last year that we'd be reporting this year at D R I timeframe that, hey, we, we've made progress. We got at least our site cleaned up and we put the, you know, the property owners on notice. There'll be something somebody could buy and build on. So I think if you go down all of our list of projects, I think right now everything is, is at best neutral with the exception of the brewery project, which is, which is sort of neutral at this point. There's been some movement. We got the land conveyed, et cetera, but, but because of, of workforce issues, he's not moving as fast as he'd like to. So I think that's just kind of our point is we're trying to find where could we say this is happening positive, let's surround around it and do it. Um, and then where can we use ten million dollars in, in investment when we do that, so.
Next year, the Augsberry Tank Farm, if they don't, if they don't, the brewery will be underway, the hotel. I mean, things are, they're gonna move forward.
I'm in favor of applying and, and I mean, being carry on it. Do you need a vote or what do you, do you want us to vote on it or?
She's looking for input. She's basically looking.
There's two votes, but there's three, four, five, six.
Okay.
So did you want to amend the boundaries? That's actually what I really wanted.
Yes, to the best of your abilities, to the most concise area with the most private projects that brings us the most money and opportunity.
Staff gets to decide on that.
And if the, you know, if the recreation center is, I mean, why stick it in there if they're not gonna fund it? It's not a revenue source. I mean, I'm looking at the private investment. With the old harbor inn and, and the brewery and right across from the brewery, the new hotel, uh, potential that, to me, those are, those are big, big for the city.
I, I, I tend to agree with John and Dan, you know, as far as the recreation center, what's it gonna bring us at, at the end of the day? You know, the recreation aspect of it.
If you can, if you can put something.
We're not making any money on our rec department now, really.
If there's improvements needed for the Lockwood Center cosmetic or whatever, if you have any numbers on that, include that, that'd be, that'd be great, something like that.
Let's just give his points.
I didn't, I didn't, first, what it's worth, there was a community that, um, I just don't remember who it was, Oswego or Rome. Um, I mean, that, that was the centerpiece of their D R I that they are moving forward with, which is a regional recreational facility. So I, I'm just saying, we haven't advanced ours. That, I think that someone misinterpreted what I'm saying. We haven't advanced ours. And that type of a project doesn't score, you can't apply for.
That was kind of the point, John. If every one of our projects, private or public, hit some sort of a, a snag this year, that, that's kind of what we're saying was it's, I mean, we get, uh, so we need to talk about quickly, when, we need to call for a special meeting tonight to be able to.
If you want to have a public hearing on that.
Do we have to?
No.
No, okay. All right, we'll, we'll just, we'll get it, we'll get it prepared and out the door.
Everything is best.
We told you we thought.
Yeah, okay.
We'll move to option two now. Mayor, just, uh, just submitted for, uh, council review. This is the, um, the monthly sheet. It's the County Emergency Services putting out. It shows a number of responses for each agency, uh, how many calls are turned over to other agencies. And I just, I want you to, to, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna send this to everybody every month so you see it. Uh, our rescue squad, obviously the percentage is, is very high, which is good. What I want you to know is the communities, uh, around us, the percentage is not so good that it will ultimately put more of demand on our service to be able to, to cover those. And you can see that. So I just want, this is just continuing to let council be apprised of, uh, of the emergency medical services issue that is, is very prevalent in the county and these are the statistics to support that.
I had one. Um, have we heard anything more on the state for a grant?
Nope, uh, they started, uh, started a wording, uh, no, no, nobody near state yet.
It's just been quiet for a while.
Yeah.
So they traditionally come out on Fridays, uh, the month of September, the first round comes out September second. Uh, I believe twelve were issued, none of New York state. Following Friday, some more come out, none of New York state. And this past week, um, there was none issued countrywide, so. I think they're still crossed, I guess.
Thank you. I do not see any hands raised.
And I will make a motion to adjourn to a second session to discuss medical, financial credit for employment history. A matter dating from appointment, appointment, motion, demotion, disband, suspension.
One second.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Rees?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Jilibah?
Yes.
Approved.
Uh, we do not anticipate action, uh, following the session, so I will make a motion to adjourn from the second session.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.